Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. In accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of those options. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19 face coverings and social distancing is required to attend the meeting. Refer to the agenda packet on the city website on how to reserve a seat and/or submit comments. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Our first study session item is Leavenworth School District USD 453 Quarterly Report. Mr. Jake Potter, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm here tonight on behalf of Dr. Roeth who had a previous engagement. Want to give you an update in terms of how schools are looking. It was just over a year ago that we were convened by the Leavenworth County Health Department and other superintendents as we made at the time what we thought was an excruciating decision to postpone spring practices. And that later became the suspension of the entire school year. So much has changed in that last year. And we've actually been able to see some normalcy in that. This week, we started spring sports practices and we were able to get through a full slate of academic and athletic and academic competitions, doing some creative kinds of things, sometimes in person, doing the social distancing kinds of things that we're doing here tonight, as well as Zoom. So debate tournaments this year happened via Zoom. And just amazing how our students and staff adapted. But going back to the county health department in this week, we're fortunate enough to be in one of the earliest phases of educators to receive vaccination. So this Thursday, we'll receive our second dose of that. And that's been a phenomenal process that Jamie Miller's team. And we work a lot on a weekly basis with Violet Gomes and Lisa Haddock as they help us negotiate close contacts and potential exposures. But the vaccination event has been awesome that we're able to get all of our staff through that are interested in a single day event. We did that the first time on February 4th. Second time will be this Thursday, both on school days. And we're able to phase our teachers in and out in a way that we were able to keep school in session. Because of trying to be proactive as possible, we did make the decision to make this Friday, the day after that second vaccination date, a no-school day, based on anecdotal information about how individuals might respond to that second vaccine. And also for us, we've allowed our substitute teachers to take part in that pool as well, which then, of course, would make it more likely that we might wake up and find some more staff absences. So we're also able to do that without any other real school calendar impacts. We were one of the first districts in the state of Kansas to begin school this year. We started one week early, using that hybrid concept where we have 50% in and out. And our philosophy was always to go slow and build speed to where we could have a sustainable calendar. And by the end of October, any student that wanted to be in person for five days a week was in Leavenworth USD 453, which again, I think makes us one of the top in the state of Kansas who was able to get to that level and also sustain it throughout the course of the year. Even as we saw cases increase in October, November, we made some tough decisions. And a lot of the information we presented to our elected board, the Board of Education, was the evidence that we had no signals of any classroom student-to-student transmission. And that was in large part due to the diligence of our staff and our students, that they were wearing their masks, they were washing their hands, they were distancing from one another. When we did have quarantine exposures, it was largely something that had happened off-site, a household quarantine situation. And we'd worked through those two weeks where they'd get educational services delivered remotely and get them back in session. So we have been able to sustain that calendar throughout. We're off for a scheduled day off a week from Friday, then we go right into spring break. And other than that, we plan to be in session through April and May. Last scheduled day of school is May 27th. So that's been awesome. And again, can't say enough about the perseverance of our staff, also our families. There's been certainly some frustrations along the way as we've tweaked things and done things differently. One of probably the biggest frustrations this year is we're down to our last six months of bond construction from a $36.7 million bond issued in 2018. And we have some amazing facilities that we've not been able to properly do ribbon cuttings for because we've had a strict adherence to no visitor policy. We're hoping to be creative and have some delayed grand openings as soon as this summer. But as you can imagine, as parents, we have parents super anxious and excited to see the place that we get to have the privilege of seeing their kiddos five days a week. And we've had to either show that via photo or video or social media. And, you know, parents are really excited to get and see it. And our community is as well, having supported that issue. Specific to the bond and what's happening right now, we are fully done with our 5th, 6th grade addition to the Richard Warren Middle School campus, the intermediate school. It's amazing. It's unlike any of the schools any of us attended at this table. And again, excited to get you all over there to see what it looks like to have a true collaborative space. And we're using that concept as we flow into the middle school. So we have some three pod areas where each of those grade levels can get together and work in a totally different way than the traditional classroom setting. Over the course of this summer, we'll take that concept down to the elementary schools. And each of those elementary schools will get a different kind of collaborative space, working with the principals and teachers and what works best for them. Probably the biggest and most significant in terms of what we think will have the future impact for our school district is the revisioning of what was Lawson Elementary School into the Earl Lawson Early Education Center. That will become the sole location where we will serve students kindergarten and pre-K. And that is on schedule to open when we start back to school August 18 for the 21-22 school year in a brand-new facility using that existing footprint. So we're super excited about that. It is on schedule. And that'll be probably one of the biggest shifts, especially those longtime Leavenworth USD 453 families that are used to their neighborhood school. All their kindergarteners and pre-K will be going to the new Early Education Center. So again, we're hoping to have some kind of groundbreaking there June and July. Hopefully, conditions are a little bit better. And we'll have some outdoor space to be able to work with as well. And then also, outside of the bond issue, we were able to do some creative things. And using capital outlay dollars, we're adding four ball fields right outside the adjacent to the Warren Middle School complex. That's an active job site right now. And we had some great support from the city water department today to come out and give us some assistance. And we'll have four ball fields that will be ready to go on schedule for March 20. So it's right around the corner in these warm weeks moving ahead has really helped that schedule. So it's going to give our ball players some flexibility that they haven't had and be able to really give a nice new signature opportunity to host some events, you know, substate kinds of things like that, that we've also been able to do at our high school gymnasium. So that's specific to the bond, really truly down to our last five or six months of bond construction. And then we'll just be punch list and things like that. So can't say enough about the support we received from the city, specifically Mike McDonald and his team. Anytime that we wanted him to come to the table to look at prints or to work through the traditional inspection process, those kinds of things, it was always whatever we needed. So I can't say enough about the support from him and his team to make that process easy for us and the construction crew that we partnered with as that project moved forward. Some highlights in terms of some normalcy, as I said. So we were able to get through our full suite of academic athletic competitions. How some highlights, probably most noteworthy is the Leavenworth JOTC Raiders are back from their national competition, coming back with a third-place finish. And overall, they had some of the highest finishes they'd had. The female team finished in second, which is the highest in team history. The males placed third, which is the highest in team history. Code placed fourth. And we came back also with the fourth ultimate male Raider, 17 trophies in total. And that's another, that's a group that, especially early on when we are learning what contact tracing impacts of, for those teams to be able to compete at a high level when masked versus unmasked and really make it through a season is remarkable. And the quarantines we had for teams, I feel, were way less than what we heard other districts and teams were doing, which is thanks to the support of our and the buy-in of all of our student participants and coaching staff to make sure we are operating as safely as possible. Basketball is almost wrapped up. Our girls are still in play. They're actually tipping off right about now at Lansing. So we're looking to see what that highlights like. Both Boys and Girls Bowling sends individuals to states, which happens this Thursday. Swimming is also this weekend, sent a number of boy swimmers to the state level. Wrestling wrapped up. Couple of individuals made it to state, both on the boys' side and the girls' side now has a dedicated tournament where we had Hannah Jackson finish as a runner-up for the second consecutive year. And on the non-athletic side, you know, musical competitions, all those things have been largely Zoom or largely restricted attendance in terms of spectators. And it's just a little bit harder for a performer to play at a not-sold-out house. But even most recently, our high school drama department conducted and streamed a musical production of Little Women. So again, just to be able to still provide opportunities to students when they look back will be like any other two-year period from their peers. And still have some normalcy has been really cool. The shift now for us as a district administrative team and board is rounding out this year's events and trying to be mindful of that senior class so we can honor as many traditions as possible. And we're doing that in a way where if we can bring classes together for events, obviously prioritizing the seniors and their families. Some of those events, we might be able to open it up to juniors as well. For example, when we do the high school academic banquet, we usually do that for all four grade levels. This year, we'll just do juniors and seniors. See families together, family units. So we're sort of honoring that cohort concept. So the last thing we want to do is have a big event and then come back and be quarantined for two months out of April or May. Probably the two biggest signature events that we're starting to get questions on that are still being actively planned is how we'll handle prom. The prom right now is being handled or planned by the junior class cabinet. And it will largely be a senior-only event. And looking at outdoor options is how we're trying to pull that off as safely as possible. And then just second to that would be graduation. The plan for that is to move back outdoors, which each graduate will receive four tickets for their families. In the event that we would have to move inside for inclement weather, we restrict it then to two individuals. And we're working with partners to make sure that we're streaming that event so those individuals that can't be there, either because of our own ticketing policy or serving overseas or some of the other situations that we have on an annual basis, they can feel like they're a part of that. And we'll have a nice video product as well so that they can make sure that they're honoring the academic achievement of not just this year, but along 12 years worth of service. So the last thing I would say is that we are, you know, looking at some of the funds that are coming to school districts to help actively plan and support what might have been some learning loss situations. We had about 20% of our students elect to go rigorous remote, which means that they never stepped foot on campus this year. Some of them knocked it out of the park. And some of them may decide that's their best way to learn. Others maybe struggled a little bit more, didn't have the home support to make sure that they're getting into classes at the right time, on the right schedule. So we don't know yet exactly what the last year is from a learning loss perspective. We didn't have state assessments last year. We will this year. Whether how that looks compared to two years back of data will be one snapshot. And there's lots of other different assessments that we look at as well. ACT scores at the high school level, all those things. So what we'll do as a district is not try to spend all of the additional resources that we get right away. We're going to be strategic as possible about it. And no, we're not going to get all of that learning slide back in one summer. But that said, we are definitely looking to offer a robust summer school opportunity this year for those students that want it, those families that are recognizing that their student might need a little bit more assistance to get caught back up for August. And then we hope by August, we're planning to continue with our safety protocols at that point in time, unless things are way relaxed, both at the city and the state level. And of course, we'll respond accordingly to that, you know, plan for the worst and adjust for the best. The good news is, our staff and students are used to coming in the doors in that manner, being respectful of the rules and being able to maintain levels of attendance again that I feel like are right up there with anybody else in the state of Kansas. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions you'd have.
Yeah, Mr. Potter, just a couple of things. Well, first, congratulations to the Raiders, of course. That's great. For the new facility that has the pre-K and the kindergarten, I mean, do you have even a rough estimate of how many children will be?
I'd say it'd be approximately 300 students.
300, okay. And then what was for graduation and prom, do you have dates for those?
Sure. The prom is May 1st and graduation is May 22nd.
Okay. And I'll just open it up to the other commissioners. Did you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. Great job on your report. And thank you to you and your team for keeping our students and as well as our teachers safe. Appreciate that.
Quick question, Mr. Potter. You said the ball fields would be ready March 20. They're going to play this year on those new fields?
Yep.
On all four of them?
That's the plan, yep.
Oh, I thought they were letting one, you know, mature or something for a year, but they're going to go on?
No, I believe that's the plan, yeah.
Yeah, three weeks, two weeks? Interesting. And are those limited attendance to?
So I don't know exactly with the spring sports, since practice has just started this week. What we've been following is two spectators per. But there's also been a little bit more accommodation for some of those outdoor sports. So baseball, softball might look differently.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to go out there and watch a game.
Okay. Commissioner Griswold?
Good to hear about the vaccinations for the staff and faculty. Without being, you know, real precise, was there a good percentage of the staff and faculty, the teachers and the staff that took the vaccinations?
Yes. And what was encouraging is, you know, you have some of those, either skeptics out there or some that aren't even, you know, comfortable with a flu vaccination. So we had some that watched their coworkers survive and get through that that now are signed up for their first, that maybe weren't planning on it ahead of time, but now are getting in that loop too. So yeah, we are appreciative of those that took that opportunity for sure.
And I won't ask you for the specific percentage, but Dr. Roeth is comfortable with the, because I know it's not mandatory.
Yeah, absolutely.
The more teachers and more staff and faculty that get vaccinations, the better, obviously.
Right. And we did open that up to substitutes that support our district, as well as transportation drivers, largely Easton Bus and Ricks that are with our students on a daily or weekly basis.
How generally has the, how has the health been of the staff and faculty? I mean, in terms of, because I know if someone gets either a student or a staff and faculty, there has to be some quarantine procedures and things like that. Generally, how is the health been of the staff and faculty?
We've been good, actually, and maybe even better than some cold and flu seasons. I think some of that is we've really encouraged staff not to come to work if they have any symptoms. And some of our teachers, you know, want to be at work every day, even if they've got a cough or a sniffle, in which they're getting some of those, you know, because kids have, coughs and sniffles too, right?
Right.
So the fact that they've been really diligent about that and, you know, washing their hands, all of that, I think, has led to some healthier outcomes anyway. But we've had a strong substitute pool. So we have had some of those two-week quarantines or two-week situations where we've had a staff absence, we've been able to fill and keep on going.
Yeah. I think one of the byproducts, at least anecdotally, is that with the public health measures is that there's been a much, very much a decrease in the seasonal flu, you know, cases.
And, you know, we're taking temperatures every day. Some of those things, I think, help to ward off. And if you know that you're feeling sick, last thing you want to do is drive all the way into work and be sent away. So some of that, I think, has helped to keep, I think, everybody just health-minded.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. You didn't have anything?
No.
Okay. No. Thank you, Mr. Potter. And pass that along to the faculty and staff. Keep up the good work and tell Dr. Roeth too. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Next item on the study session is Main Street 2020 Annual Report. And that's Mrs. Scheit. Come up here, please.
Thank you, Mayor Parkland, commissioners and staff. I have Laura Neffert and Dan Linton here for my board.
Yep.
Water. Hit that pipe.
My, I'm going to sit down.
We were saved.
So, you know, crazy year. We're maybe in recovery. We don't know. But many of you hopefully watched the presentation. Okay. I won't go through everything, but we did pivot it to survival moment. And the office was pretty much open all of the time. There were a couple of weeks where Maddy and I switched off some times. You know, we really pushed out all of the funding opportunities, the higher, the idle, the PPP, all of the other available funding for the merchants, knowing that, you know, they were in some tough times. They, those that were deemed essential did really well. Those that couldn't open yet, you know, they really worked around what they could do. Some remodeled their businesses, some cleaned. We knew that they were the safest locations to be at, much safer than the big boxes and whatever. But anyway, they're dedicated merchants. So we knew that it was imperative that safety was first during this period. We tried to pivot and make sure that businesses could do any activities we offered at no cost. We wanted to make sure that we were getting folks directly into their businesses, rewarding consumers for spending money and spreading the word that it was downtown was clean, safe, and social distancing was easy to do. So early on, I asked Kristi at CVB if she'd like to partner on this, and we did. And we did some homemade signs. We got out there. We talked to the merchants. And some of the videos are further down in the PowerPoint. But we wanted to get that out there, that they love their consumers. They want to do everything they can to bring them back in. More of those photos. So let's see. Did you all watch most of the videos? Do you want me to play some of them?
I watched a couple.
I think the, this one is one of the... This is the video that Kristi and I worked on with the Union Pacific.
You're not going to feel like a stranger or out of town or a clock man between everybody like they're friends or family.
Leavenworth is a very community. People are friendly and they're people pulled together.
It's a very wonderful hometown community, partly because of the fort up here. We have a lot of people coming in and going out. So it's just constantly being able to meet new people and still have all the friends within the community that continue to come downtown and support us too. It's a wonderful community here.
So you get to dine, enjoy a beautiful walk from Broadway to the river and back with really super friendly, comfortable in their skin people.
And most of our customers that do come on, so you don't call them customers anymore. Oh, because they're cousins, they both came.
Well, I think people will tell you if you come in here, then it's a family environment. And yeah, so that's why people return over and over because they feel like they're getting our home.
I have no idea how much you grow from your customers and how, I can't believe them. Sometimes you're here and a customer brings you forward, brings you lunch, or you just become so close to them. They mean the world to you.
It's a beautiful, like a store downtown. And everybody that comes through is always commenting that, oh, my gosh, they didn't realize Leavenworth was such a relaxed and inviting community.
It's a city, but it has that small-town feel. It is the heart of Leavenworth County.
It's unique, you know, we're one of the first cities to ever be established in Kansas. And it makes it a destination spot, for sure. It's a place to come visit, a quick little weekend getaway.
We actually have people that come from other states. They've been here from, they're from Kentucky. I have folks from South Dakota that drive in.
And there's a lot of upcoming boutiques and stores that are new like us.
Where do we open our full hours? We'll do whatever we need to do. We need business.
That's great. Yeah.
Ms. Scheit, there was a series of videos that you were able to put together. Now, was that because of some, any funds that were provided as a result of COVID-19?
Well, this particular video was part of the Union Pacific grant that I applied for through Kansas Main Street. And so it was competitive. It came out. We had about two weeks to get it together, to even come up with a new event. And so we kicked that off on June 15th. And I think around the end of May, we were notified of that. So that was open to communities that had a Union Pacific going through them, Kansas Main Street communities. And then Kristi and I, you'll notice on some of the other video initiatives. So some of these first videos were ones that Kristi and I did together, just informally on her phone. And we interviewed a number of the merchants to get those out. And then we hired Toto TV to do the professional one. And they gave us a short version, a long version, and a...
A medium.
Hovering over. I can't think of the word right now. So anyway, did most of you watch most of those? Do you want me to play any?
I watched a few of them. But yeah, I love the videos. I think, I mean, that's a great idea. You think you'll continue just doing videos?
I would imagine we will. Yep. We've got some new activities coming up in the spring. I guess spring's here almost. So yes, we will continue with those.
I mean, it really, even the one you showed, you know, it captures just businesses and the community and how heartfelt it is.
Yep.
How people, you know, the togetherness. So no, I really like them.
So maybe, do you want to play the second one on that one, Taylor?
The Facebook?
Yeah. This has Military Memorabilia, which is military gift shop now, and Momos and the Tune Shop, I believe. And then we'll... And it showcases, lots of people don't realize what Military Memorabilia, they sew all these patches on for the military.
Military Memorabilia, we're around Leavenworth Street. Anyway, this is what we do, put all the names and ranks, patches on. This is also what we do for motorcycle personnel. So anybody needs a professional job, don't worry.
So we're doing our best to help bring people back into the community as they feel comfortable and are enjoying seeing some people you haven't seen for a long. I hope to see you when you're...
Hi, I'm Eric from the Tune Shop here in downtown Leavenworth. We're starting lessons back up next week and looking forward to our 300 students a week coming to take lessons.
Wow. That's a lot, yeah.
That's great.
That's great.
So Eric, you know, it's the Tune Shop. They do classes there. They sell instruments. I was given the Back 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 Door Tour one day. It's amazing, all the work that they do on all of these students' instruments. I mean, it's just a factory back there that Eric and his staff work on. So it's just, every time I go in, and I've tried to ask the merchants if they'd like to showcase, you know, their background, you know, what they did before they had a business, et cetera. Most of them don't want to do that. But it's very fascinating when I get to see those things.
And the Tune Shop's been around for a long time, hasn't it?
I don't know how many years, but...
Like in the eighties.
I know the guy I went to high school with his parents on, in the 60s.
Okay. Yeah, I remember when I was little. Yeah, so early 70s or, yeah, maybe 60s.
He was definitely there in the early 60s. I mean, in addition to the citizens who've lived in Leavenworth all their lives, the families, militaries are all aware of it. If their children are involved musically, a lot of times they'll work with the Tune Shop.
Sure. He's out and about in the schools all the time and in the community. And so that just resonates with all of the merchants, be them, if they've been here a long time or if they're just coming in. It's amazing what their backgrounds are. Maybe nothing related to the retail that they do or the restaurant, but sometimes it is. So we won't play anymore unless you have something specifically. We might play the awards video later in the presentation.
Okay.
So we'll go on to the budget. We started with $174,200 budget. And we always, you know, do those checks throughout the year to see where we're at. We ended up with $129,656. And this pretty much shows you where those incomes came from and our program expenses. So our building income, that's from our rents because now we have our loft done. But it was only done as of May 1st. And then we have a few additional mural repairs and projects that we had to do, taxes, loan interest. So we had an ending balance of $883, but we tried to make that really stretch as far as we could. It really helped to have the PPP, the Sparks, which was designated from Secretary Tolan that each Main Street would get that $4,800, even though it was competitive for all businesses. And then the, now I guess that's the two we got. Any questions on that?
No.
No, ma'am.
So our Union Pacific Grant Award was $3,000. And we partnered with Kristi at the CVB, and she put in $2,000. So we had that money to produce those videos, to do the ticket-to-shop promotion, the prizes and all that type of stuff. So economic development remained steady while we were through COVID. I mean, I have people... I mean, I have people nearly every week, every couple of weeks, calling, walking in, wanting to know, have more information. So, from the quarterly reports that I maintain for Kansas Main Street, I have a minimum of $5,937 that amounted to renovations, building purchases, public investment from the city, et cetera. You know, we had some new businesses, some of them came in the end of 19, most of them in 2020, that you can see there. Petrus Embus, the food truck, came in in 2020 as well. Several businesses expanded, which is always good. Island Spice, he was off in, on deployment somewhere, so they were closed for a little while. And the Saint Sushi is the family bistro that changed their name. A few closings, MJ Chow Hall and the First City Wine and Spirits closed, I would say, in March, right when the pandemic hit. But for the most part, most everybody remained. Kansas Embroidery left towards the end of the year. Her husband has been really sick and has since passed away, but she will still be part of Main Street and be coming back, not as a storefront. So, our, just to let you know, I count the buildings that are available to lease or to purchase, and we have about 221 buildings downtown that are storefront or storefront compatible. That doesn't include City Hall and the two hotels and IMAC and stove lofts and those type of things. But when I just did my available properties, we have 15 storefronts that are for lease. We have seven empty buildings that are for sale. We have six buildings that are for sale, although they have tenants in the storefronts. So, all in all, that's only about 22 locations that are either empty or for sale. And you know, we have a couple of big ones, like the Lee's Building, like the Club Venom. And so, I think, all in all, and we have new folks coming in, let's see. We have a Microbrewery coming in, they purchased a building. We have a distillery coming in, that's exciting. We have at least one new eatery, possibly two coming in. A boutique is looking at a building to purchase, so, you know, it's promising.
Have anybody inquired about the Lee's Furniture Building recently?
Do you know that answer, Lori?
We showed it a week or two ago.
Can you, can you come up or go to the podium?
Lori's with Kohl Banker, Riley's.
Yeah, so people can hear you. The podium is great. Thank you.
And just state your name.
Hi, I'm Lori Mepher. I'm a realtor, and I'm on the board for Main Street. We have shown it once, the Lee's Building. I think it does need quite a bit of work on the inside, so it's, that's kind of a obstacle that's, that people that are looking to purchase are having to work through. It's, we have noticed that with commercial buildings that it's not, people don't just quickly buy a building. They have to do a lot of research and figure out.
And it's a large, yeah, a large building.
Right.
Was the person or people who were looking from within our local area, or were they from out of state, or?
He's close by, and from what I understood, he's kinda wanting to look at it as an advanced space. It's a really nice building, it's just, it's got a lot of deferred maintenance.
It's an historical building, right?
It's not listed on the downtown list. I think probably because it had the iron curtain on it when they did the designations back before I was here. And so, hopefully, you know, I've asked Planning if they could apply to do a new review of downtown properties. I'm not sure, since John put those replacement windows in that aren't historic, it may not qualify. But no, you'd think it is, but it isn't.
When were those windows put in, Ms. Scheich?
After he took the iron curtain off.
Four years, probably?
Four years ago, probably.
It looks a little better, I think maybe because they had these kind of ratty-looking shades that were there, and I think since it's up for sale, they've taken those kind of shades down, and it looks better. Not great, but I think a little bit better.
Well, we encourage building owners to, you know, wash the windows, make them presentable, but you know as well as I do, we have many that are downtown, that they're working on them or whatever, and they look pretty bad. But yes, when Riley listed it, I think they pulled some of that plastic down, and it looks a little bit better.
And it is, it is, it is a three-story building, but the third floor is, you can't get out there. The flooring is kind of...
And it has a full basement, too. Is that still today, is that still usable, the basement? I just remember from the furniture days, you know.
I was gonna say, is there an elevator?
Yeah, a lot of things down, downstairs.
There is an elevator that, I mean, I don't know.
Probably a furniture elevator.
It's a freight elevator. I've taken it before, it's not super scary, but...
So, crack that door on Cherokee, right at the west end of the building, that door that I was at.
So, you know, it only takes one person to buy it. We'll continue to reach out to out-of-town folks that's within the opportunity zones as well. Jade Everland Crancers is on the market. There's not a sign in the building yet, but Riley has that, and it's a lot more expensive, it's a lot more of a building. And so, those are, you know, pretty big, high-dollar, plus the renovation. I'm not sure in the other, besides the first three floors of the Ward's Building or Crancers, what those floors look like. I've never been up there. Anybody been up there on those?
Above three? No, I don't think he had anything of, it used to be some offices, but...
Well, I think his offices are on three, and then the lounge is on two, and the event center is on one.
Above that, I don't think he's ever used for public.
Well, I can't imagine Ward's didn't have an elevator, but I don't know that there's a working elevator in that building. There never was when we did events and had to get people from the first floor to the lounge.
It does have an, it did have an elevator in the back that was up in the alley, but it's non-workable. We had events there, and we funded for ADA, and that would be the only way, and the elevator does not function. So, it's a tough ADA-compliant building. When you say it's for sale, the building's for sale, is the business still active right now? I know there's not many events going on, but...
You know, Kat, Kat was the event gal, she owns the, a restaurant in Weston. I can't answer that, I haven't talked to her for a while, they haven't had much going on. They, I don't think they've been open on Thursday evenings. So, I'm not aware of any events that have gone on in 2020. You know, beautiful location, beautiful second floor, first floor, lots of potential. So, I'm confident that something will happen in that space. And I can send you, I maintain this available properties list. If you'd like me to send the PDF, I can send that on, or Carlin could send it on, I didn't make a copy of all those. Sometimes it looks like a lot, because they're categorized, and green is upper story and not storefront on this list. Red is for sale and black is for lease. So, this is an invaluable document that I send out to everybody, along with the funding opportunities. We are really working on upper-story development, we know how important it is. Kansas Main Street just announced a grant opportunity we'll be applying for. They're kind of relatively small opportunities, because they're competitive and they're within the other Main Street communities. But, you know, Ken Bateman put, Bateman put two beautiful lofts in his building at 618, and we finished our loft at 416. Island Spice plans to move downtown, his personal residence, and is working on that space. We've got a number of them ready to start. So, we've talked to Kansas Main Street and to Secretary Tolan and let him know that foundations now are funding larger amounts to fewer projects, because that infusion of a larger amount makes a lot more sense, but that may not happen. We'll keep talking about that, and maybe, you know, it'll just be a few communities. But right now, it's competitive, and there are about $6,000 grant opportunities. We, we have about 65 upper-story lofts that include storefront apartments, those two of Carol Blackwell's, but they don't include like the Stove Factory Loft or the High Rises, some of those type of things. So, that's quite a few in our downtown. Some have been renovated, some have not. It's about the same. So, these are some of Ken Bateman's, his new lofts.
Are those rented yet?
Yep, rented immediately.
Yeah, I've heard those before, yeah, they're very nice.
And they're beautiful. This is the Main Street Loft that we got done with, and we rented it pretty much immediately to a young military permanent party, I think. He works at the USDB, and so, anyway, certainly a great addition to downtown. We use this as a tax credit project. That's a big process that I did on my spare time, but, you know, it was worth it to show folks that they could go ahead and work on a tax credit project, and Ken uses tax credits as well. This is some early photos of the Island Spice upstairs. It's pretty cool, I don't know how much of the historic features will remain, but that's exciting when I get to go into those locations. This was Channel 5, Nathan Vickers came out and did an article on Lee Kaufman, our muralist, and then it talks about her studio. Do you wanna see that one? Did you watch that one?
How long is it, Wendy?
I don't think it's too long. We could stop it at any time. Can you start that one? It's always nice when a large channel reaches out to us and wants to do something instead of us having to reach out to them and usually don't get a response. Oh, there's a couple commercials, too, I don't know if we can go past those? No, maybe not.
Challenge yourself to the career you want. Challenge accepted. Purdue University Global, affordable online education for driven working adults. ...about art. Creativity takes courage, and during the COVID recession, it may take more courage than normal to create. Artathan Vickers shows us some work that was put on hold when the pandemic began and explains what it's like for artists picking up the brush again.
The color palette of the rising sun inspires creativity. But for Lee Kaufman...
I am not a morning person.
Starting at dawn is a practical matter.
Hey, try to get out there early, because otherwise it gets too hot.
A hundred-year-old building in downtown Leavenworth is a difficult canvas.
It's a much rougher surface.
The heat of the day doesn't help.
If it gets too hot, the paint's not gonna stick real good to the walls and maybe possibly come off later.
She wanted to be finishing up this project for the Main Street program back in the spring. The pandemic set it back.
Then I got permission from the city to come out and go ahead and start painting again.
Then there was the gallery shielded in Tonganoxie, featuring her work alongside other local painters like Kathy Bragheisen.
Artist, music for the soul, it's just something that we all need for happiness, that takes us into a dream world.
Businesses like this one went on to...
It was open for two months and then had to close for the coronavirus.
For many artists, it was a new opportunity.
With all this home time, I had nothing to do but sit and paint and paint and paint some more. A lot of creativity in the head, the head was very busy.
Now the small-town shopping's open once again.
And our galleries are such a place to go, because you don't touch anything.
And Kaufman's brush has found its stroke.
The whole idea about doing art for me is that people see it and it makes them happy.
Soon the stories of Lewis and Clark, the railroads, and the buffalo soldiers will greet visitors driving by to the D. Scheich's office.
It is tremendous, we are so excited.
A sign that town is recovering, too.
We feel like a lot more added public art will only showcase Leavenworth better and bring more people here.
Art finds a way.
Artists shouldn't be afraid to get it out there.
As long as those with the passion are there.
I just love what I do.
To add color to the world. And Leavenworth, Nathan Vickers, KCTV5 News.
Thank you for, thank you for showing that. Lee Kaufman is an amazing artist, and that is a tremendous creation, I think, and catches everybody's eye as they travel through our downtown, and...
And it's a piece of artwork, because she used a little bit of spray paint, but most of it was brushes and paint, and I'd have to hold up these big sections of paper that she'd drawn on, and she'd sketch those out. And she's visiting with a couple other folks in Leavenworth downtown to do murals for them.
Oh, nice.
So, that's exciting. And we lucked out having her do our mural. We continue with our incentive without walls, and it helps a little bit. The maximum we can loan is, at no interest, is $20,000, and they provide $60,000 match. So, we look at those projects.
And who is that, the state, or they, or...
Well, before Kansas Main Street was reinstated, we were able to keep our IWW money, that's money that's Department of Commerce money. So, now that they're there, I would imagine they'll review our loans in the interim. When we didn't have Kansas Main Street, our board would review the loans. I would write those applications, and they would review those. So, Karma has a loan. Dr. Kristen, Kristen at Life Family Chiropractic has a loan. Kay, she's a therapist, has a loan. Tenpenny has had loans, many of them have had loans. Kansas Country, Growness, so we've had a long history of helping out a lot of businesses. We are, you know, a partner with the city, we appreciate the things that we do, and we hope that you appreciate those community business benefit projects that we're doing, the veterans' banners on Delaware, the American flags that we put up. We couldn't do the reception this year. In 2020, we went ahead with the 5K History Walking Trail, and that starts at Hay Market. So, I really encourage you to take that, bits and pieces of the whole thing. It's amazing, all of the histories that are on, they're posted on the building. So, you start at the Hay Market and go towards the Water Department, and it leads you down Cherokee, back up Delaware, down Shawnee, and there's 131 signs, a great history of buildings and the town. We did a Shawnee Art Walk and showcased that, I believe, in 2019. And then, we added some signage on our message boards, we renovated the message boards. So, you know, those are more public art things. The pole banner project, the ones that are out and about and are sponsored by businesses, that's winding down. We've had a number of them, the bracket's broken by trucks, and it's been about four years. And so, and due to Evergy's size requirements, it really doesn't make sense to do those banners anymore, because they've shortened them, they're only three foot, they used to be four foot. They have to be within a certain area on the pole, and it's really hard to see those sponsors. So, we'll come up with some other project. That's the Banner of Honor and the flags over Delaware, and that's a popular one. We, Marley manages that, and we always have a waiting list. This was the First City Passageways. We were gonna do it in June last year, but we had to put it off. So, come September, October-ish, we did that, and those are the unique kind of underutilized doorways, windows that were around town, and so Nancy Bowder won first place, and Amy Mann at Tom and Anne's won second, and Alan Collins won third, and we had, I believe, eight artists. And so, we hope, we plan to bring that project back in June. So, you can see the befores and the after. There's our mural and Lee signing it, and we had a dedication, little mini-party there in the parking lot. Here's the History 101 Starting Trail, and you can see that this is what our message boards look like on the right, and we had a volunteer refurbish them, so we've got a nice black banner around them, yellow tops, and at some point, we don't have them on there, there's some graphics that go down the poles that'll say 5K History Walking Trail, but they're not there yet.
How many message boards are data?
We have seven, I believe. So, our intent this year, we need to change our Shawnee Art Walk, was we realized that one of the histories that we, you know, was a professional history we got off of the internet isn't exactly right, so we're gonna change that. And then, there were kind of some arrows on our brochure, and it... And then there were kind of some arrows on our brochure and it almost led people to think, oh, I go this way to see that one. And that isn't right. So anyway, we're getting ready to do two new Art Walk signs. And we'll do some other fun signs that recognize the Three Mob Creek Trail, the message board that's down at Haymarket. We have a couple, you've probably seen that caricature map that's always in the shopper that the Times does. So we're going to do some fun maps like that that showcase downtown, shop local, eat local, that type of thing. So those are coming in 2021. This is the new banner that will be in the municipal parking lots. We're in the process of making those. So that'll add a lot more color downtown.
Will they be at the entrance to the parking lot?
They'll be on the poles that are within, usually in the islands.
Okay.
So we've done a map. I don't remember how many. There's quite a few. It's an expensive project. They'll be double-sided.
And how, did you say how many or no?
You know, I didn't look that up since that's a 2021 project.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, it's quite a few. I'm going to say forty-some.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's see. These are economic impact events that, you know, all businesses can do. Sometimes they're for Main Street businesses, but we found that the Getting Back on Track was really popular. We did well with the Shop Small Saturday and Christmas in July events. The Rockin' Around the Christmas Tree was great. And then the infusion of the Unified District 453, thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty Main Street bucks the week of Christmas was awesome. The merchants just continued to tell me how fabulous that was. They continued to come in. We're way past the twelve thousand five that had been redeemed. We're probably at thirteen thousand five from when I put this together. But it just shows how important, you know, local businesses, local entities investing in the merchants is amazing. So this was our Rockin' Around the Christmas Tree, some of our winners. We had a weekly drawing and we partnered with Christie at the CBB. These are the activities that we do and many of them were canceled. And we don't want to forget our tried and true merchants because they're our anchors and they're the ones that have been around through good times and bad. Sometimes we only talk about those new businesses, but we've got a lot of tried and true merchants that are there. And, you know, they exist. They're the key to success downtown and we need them and they need us. It's a tremendous revenue source downtown from the many merchants. So I encourage you to go in, get to know them. They're fun. They're pretty amazing. You know, these are, certainly the Club Venom building is a thorn in our side and I'll visit more with Paul and Taylor on that one. The Lee's furniture, you know, it's come down to a little bit more of a reasonable price. I think it's six-hundred-and-fifty or five-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So we'll continue to reach out to folks. The thing we found during COVID is that many folks, which we encouraged them to use the internet, they started doing Facebook Lives and they're very successful for them, which is great. But they've decided that there's no way they're going to be open six days a week anymore. So as we have folks come visit our beautiful downtown, I'll drive by and there'll be, you know, a mom and a daughter or something. It's like, no, it's closed. Monday isn't a very open day downtown. And so many of them shortened their hours. We're hoping that they will go back. We continue to talk about you have to be open consumer hours. And consumer hours aren't ten to five. So we're continuing on that tangent, but it changes so many things with the pandemic. And, you know, we know that many shopped online, Amazon, all of those types of things. But like I said, we need them and they need us. And we have an exciting downtown. Let's see. These are our awards. Can we play that? It's that one, the next one? Oops. Oops.
Sure.
I got to go through all of them.
Yeah, because this was on Facebook as well, wasn't it?
Uh huh. Yeah, it was on our Facebook.
Yeah.
So we had to do our annual banquet virtually this year and we were fortunate to have Brenna Darley, a local resident, a KU student, do, put together our video. So it's bits and pieces from board meetings. And then we went up to Secretary Tolan's office and awarded him an award because he was so instrumental in promoting Kansas Main Street and doing everything he could to, for our Kansas Main Streets. So in closing, I handed out a few things. These are the businesses that are in downtown Leavenworth categorized, updated for your information. We do keep up our shopping and dining guide. This is the bigger one. This is the business guide. These are Main Street investors. And on the back of the shopping and dining guide, you'll notice the, well, both of them have the calendar of events, but on the shopping and dining, it starts with March. We did events in January and February, but we didn't have enough room to keep those on here. So we've added several new events. We have a Spring Open House that's March 26th and 27th. We've, starting a Main Street Marketplace, which will be held first Saturdays at the Haymarket Event Center. And that will help showcase some home-based businesses and those that aren't in the downtown district. We have a Spring Fling beginning that's similar to the Rockin' Around the Christmas Tree promotion where they spend money, they'll get a stamp, and we'll do drawings. That is March 15th through May 15th. Because we haven't been able to have our very popular Spring Tea last year or this year, we're doing a tour to tea tables, which is a free event for any business, even outside of the downtown. They will decorate a beautiful tea table in their business. Folks will get a map, a free map. They can go around and view those and vote on them for second, third, maybe a few more places. We will have some silent auction-type baskets that are part of that promotion, but we want to keep that in the mind's eye. So hopefully 2022, we can have that go on. So anyway, the business brochure hasn't been updated with the new events, but we always do that on the back. Merchants have those. We hand those out a lot. So Thursday evening is our very popular International Beer Fest. You go around to eighteen-plus businesses, two-ounce or less sample of an international beer, a nice tasty thing. You don't need dinner that night. It's a fun event. People social distance. They have their mask on. They're careful if there's a group in of six or eight inside. They wait. So that's a very fun event. Spring Open House is just, we'll have some different activities downtown. It's whatever the merchants want to do. It's not real structured. April is a Live After Five on April 1st. And it's an art crawl. So we'll have lots of different art featured in the different businesses. So those are well worth the fifteen-dollar ticket. And I think that's all I have right now. I thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. Mrs. Schein, have you lost any this year, I guess, or lost any memberships or renewals as of this year from businesses?
Oh, we always lose a few. We've lost probably one that I know of due to the mask issue.
Okay.
Some are very strong either way.
Right.
They haven't come out and told us, but we feel like that's probably what the issue is.
But not more than any usual year, would you say?
No.
So it didn't really...
No, we're usually pretty consistent around that hundred-and-thirty, hundred-and-forty-ish type. Where the end of February, we requested most of our renewals come in. We have some quarterly members that pay quarterly. So some haven't paid their first quarter dues. But yeah, we're pretty consistent with what we do.
Right. Okay. And then, did you, during this whole pandemic time, and I know it's still ongoing, but even starting last year, did you reach out to any other Main Street organizations just to see how they were dealing with their downtowns or good ideas?
Oh, yeah. We had several, you know, group Zoom calls, team calls, I think the state uses. And so we were all on those and learning different tactics to use to help our small businesses. Yeah, we all talked together.
Okay. Well, yeah, no, I just have one more thing and then I'll pass it around to the commissioners. But no, I want to commend you and your staff and your board through this whole time period. I mean, the start of everything, shutdown and everything. My goodness, you guys just kept on working and kept seeing what can we do, how can we help, how can we help businesses and keep this community together for downtown? I mean, that shows, and that shows how much you care and how much your board cares. And the downtown businesses care for each other. So I thank you very much for that.
Well, we reached out to folks that weren't Main Street investors. You know, I would personally text. If I know they don't, look at an email. I'd call, I'd go in, whatever, you know, to try and say, hey, have you taken advantage of this city opportunity or this state or this federal opportunity? There's always different circumstances and I can't force them to do it, but many did.
Right.
And so, and I'm understanding that the higher grants have been forgiven, the loans. So that's a cool deal for some restaurants. We had four restaurants downtown that received that early on.
Okay, good.
So, you know, some were hesitant. They went ahead and applied, but they put that money in a separate account, didn't want to touch it in case they had to pay it back. But it was granted in the end. So.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, did you have anything?
Good presentation, all the moments.
Thank you.
Sure.
Two questions, Ms. Schein. You listed seven business closings. I'm just, any of them, in your opinion, directly related to the pandemic? I'm thinking MJ Chau Hall. They opened at just, I don't want to say terrible time, but they opened in...
They did. And, you know, I think they were trying to carry on when stretch pulled out. And I think they had worked for him. And it just wasn't, you know, I think they just thought, hey...
Do you think the pandemic closed?
I think them having to close.
But the other ones listed, any of them related to the pandemic?
You know, you think...
I know where it closed for, a lot of non-essentials were closed for, what, about sixty days?
Yep.
April through first of June, somewhere in there?
Well, like the First City Wine and Spirits, I thought, well, goodness, the liquor stores are doing a heck of a business. But, you know, maybe because of their location, they're getting ready to reopen in another location.
Yeah, they are.
And Pullman closed temporarily, totally.
Well, restaurants hit. That was the, wasn't that...
But they could do carryout.
Oh, yeah.
Or they could do delivery. So all of, I think, most all of the other ones did carryout.
Yeah.
Right.
And, you know, even delivered, you know, their own delivery services. So...
They were delivering on post, too, weren't they?
Yep, yep, yep. They were doing everything they could. It was amazing to watch them just like they were the Eveready bunnies.
So, once again, the question, you don't think any of them closed necessarily for the pandemic, besides maybe MJ Chau Hall, may have hit them the hardest because of their timing of their opening?
I think that probably hit them the hardest.
Yeah.
Because that was a large space.
And I, just one other question. Obviously, we put in a mask ordinance, put one in in November, put one in in January through the end of March. And there are people on both sides of the, of the question. One of the things that we heard, and I just haven't seen any evidence of it, but I'm wondering if you have, how has that either negatively, negatively or positively affected businesses?
Well, you know, we will hear those that really don't want to wear a mask and the owners will ask them, will you please put a mask on before the mandate was in place? Because they, you know, wanted to be open.
Right.
Number one, they don't want to have to close down. And, you know, they would have some that, one restaurant I know was having folks sign in with their phone number and people didn't want to do that. And for the contact tracing and...
No, I'm asking about the mask, not about the contact tracing.
Okay. So they either walk out of the business or they go ahead and come in and the owner doesn't push the issue.
Okay. And you're probably in touch with a lot of businesses that surround Leavenworth County. You know, it's one of the things you heard, said, we'll never shop in Leavenworth again. We'll go down the road. But are there any places really that you can, during the mask mandate time, ordinance times in various cities and counties, is there really any place within fifty miles of here that you could shop without masks that you know of?
Online.
No, I know that.
Yeah, in your house.
Really grow those sales. I'm not aware. You know, we're probably the biggest community.
Oh, what, legends, the legends.
Well...
In Kansas City, Missouri, Johnson County, yeah.
Um...
Okay. I just wondered, because I hear that, said this will kill our business. And I can see closing of a business can do it, but wearing the mask, I, in these times, if we're the only place in the United States of America that did it, I think it'd be a little bit odd. But if we're with everyone else, I just have not seen how it's had a negative effect. The pandemic as a whole has, obviously. Amazon's doing land office business, but...
Well, we continue to say, you know, nobody really likes wearing masks, but if it keeps us open, if it keeps the businesses open, that's the bottom line. We've got to be open. They can't do anything. They can't stay in business if they can't be open. It's really difficult. I guess they could do some online sales, but that won't hold them over.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Ms. Schein, you mentioned four or five businesses that had gotten the loans. Were those the loans available through the Paycheck Protection Program? Were those those loans?
Well, the higher were just for restaurants.
Right. But then later on, I think your organization plus LCDC did a good job in terms of being an information broker, in terms of getting the word out to our businesses that these Paycheck Protection Program loans.
Yep.
Which have become forgivable and were low interest to begin with. I think they were, you know, like a one percent interest rate. And I appreciate that and was aware of that because I was having these, you know, mayor's town halls and we would talk about that just to get the word out. And I know our banking community, both within the city and the county, did a great job working with their businesses to get these loans. And just for the city, the total amount that was loaned through that program was approximately nine million dollars. There were two-hundred-and-ninety-four total loans to businesses, which included, you know, your typical small business, but nonprofits or not-for-profit organizations, sole proprietorships and LLCs, and that the total retained jobs were about fifteen-hundred, one-thousand-five-hundred jobs that were retained. So that was a program that you and LCDC supported just in terms of reaching out to your partners and including the city. And I just want to thank you for that and Marley and your investors.
Yep. We, you know, pushed for that CDBG money since we're an entitled city. I don't know if that's a proper term, but, you know, and that finally came through. I know there were a lot of hoops the city had to go through. The PPP, the first round, really wasn't for folks that were... The PPP, the first round really wasn't for folks that were the only, they weren't even employees, they were owners. So that was kind of difficult. I believe it finally opened up to where if you were a owner, you could apply for that. And then the city relief grant, that was popular and I hope that that went over well. I haven't touched base with Taylor lately, but, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, they're all different, you know, some, a husband might own the building and the other spouse pays rent to that and that's a different combination. Some have bank loans, some don't. Some have a few employees, some, it's only themselves. So it's, it's just a mixed bag of how they operate their businesses. And I think everything that, that, you know, the ones that really hopped on those opportunities quickly generally got funded, but it was pretty quick. The money went fast.
But there, I think we are in the second round of these Small Business Administration PPP loans, if I'm not mistaken. So if you're continuing to get the word out about that, that would be, that would be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
You know, that's our, that's our passion and, and mission to keep them in business. We only, you know, are in business because they're in business.
Right, okay. Well, thank, thank you very much. It was a great report, Mrs. Scheid. Thank you.
As always, call on Marley or I, anything you need and we'll continue to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
It's a busy time. How could it be March 2nd already?
I know. Okay, and number three on the study session is Police Department 2020 Annual Report. Chief Pat Kitchens.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Commissioner. Thank you very much for having us tonight. I'm here representing the men and women of the Police Department to present to you the 2020 Annual Report. Before I begin, the first statistic I wanted to report is the number four, which is how many kennels are in the animal control van that I did not know two weeks ago. But Mayor Bowder is not here, so if you're out there, ma'am, sorry about that.
I'll tell him.
Four.
Four, okay.
Hopefully she's watching.
Right.
Probably is.
Again, I'm here to present the 2020 Annual Report from the Police Department. For many, many years, the Police Department has prepared a report that tries to give a general sense to the community and to the elected officials about the ongoings of crime and traffic and animal issues that happen over the course of the year. We collect a massive amount of data and a ton of data. Not all of it is contained in the report. If it was, it would be a phone book and be really difficult to follow and be bored to death. So this really just kind of encapsulates those common elements that we try and deal with every year and answer those questions. But if at some point there's something else you want to know, we're certainly easily, easily able to provide that to you. The other part before I begin that I like to talk about is that this only tells half the story. Data can be represented in many different ways, but as important as the information contained in the report, it's how people feel about the community. I feel very strongly about trying to get a sense of that. No matter what this data says to you, it may reflect positive stuff, which I'll talk about. But if you were the victim of a crime last year, these numbers really don't mean a whole lot to you. You might not feel as safe. And as I go about my day and I talk to people and I, and I sense and gauge how they're doing, that's as important to me as any information that we have here. So let's get started. I'll do that, ask any questions. I don't have any videos for you to look at. You probably wouldn't be able to look at ours anyway. Let's see, all right, that way. All right, so that's the organizational chart. If you had any questions about that. Let's start a little bit. My message, obviously, last year was a very difficult year for everybody, including the Police Department with the pandemic stuff. We had civil unrest, high-profile police incidents, a pretty contentious presidential election, and we were pretty, pretty involved in most of those things. But by and large, very proud of the men and women of the Police Department. As a general sense, I would share with you that the crime rate overall in the city of Leavenworth dropped by eleven percent last year. That's the second year in a row that we've seen a fairly significant drop in the crime rate. And I'll get into the details of that. Nothing really has changed in terms of our resource allocation. The principal issues that we deal with are domestic violence, mental illness, drug cases, traffic issues, animal control issues. Those things are something that require a great deal of our attention and we continue to do the best that we can to allocate that. So let's get started talking about a little bit of data. The Police Department in general, we are allocated sixty-one positions. We stand at eight vacancies right now. We've averaged that number about seven over the last few years. That is common in the law enforcement profession. Almost all law enforcement agencies across the United States are dealing with hiring, retaining and attracting candidates to come to the Police Department. We still, this week, we're involved in a hiring process. They're interviewing eight candidates for officer positions tomorrow and Thursday, so we'll see how that goes. Hopefully, that group will produce some candidates and we'll get some people hired and keep, keep that, get that number down for us as we move through the rest of the year.
Chief, when you say they, who are they in terms of the interview panel?
So, yeah, so we have, the hiring process is quite extensive. It's about three or four months. So they, these candidates have taken both the PT test and the written test and passed them. They've also passed the preliminary criminal history check that would automatically eliminate them. So these eight candidates we have left have, you know, gotten over a pretty significant hurdle. And then, so there's a panel of staff members that interview them. And then we'll make, make some sense about whether we feel like they should advance in the process and then there's several other stages in the process. And so they're probably about a third of the way through that.
Who heads this, who heads that panel? Do you rotate it among your more senior officers or is it the deputy chief?
Yes, so there's actually a two-stage interview process. There's a panel of about somewhere from three to five, depending on what the schedules are. But I have the patrol lieutenant who is, would be in charge of all the uniformed officers. I have a sergeant that's the administrative sergeant. He handles all of the, you know, application process and the recruiting and retention. And then there's typically one or two other sergeants, senior people that conduct those interviews. And if they pass that, then they are sent to me and the deputy chief and we do a second, smaller interview.
I got it.
Okay? So what continues to affect my hairline adversely is, oh, what did I do, Taylor? Did I turn it off? Sorry, I was looking for the red dot thing. Forget it. That number right there, the blue chunk right there that says thirty-seven percent, that represents the number of, those officers have been here for two years or less. And so they have a tremendous amount of energy, a good attitude and good morale, but they don't have a lot of experience. And so they're out there doing the best they can, getting through those growing pain stages. It probably takes about three years really till you get completely comfortable. And so I lose a little bit of my hairline once, once a week or once a month with one of the young kids. Doing a great job, great attitude, just young and inexperienced. And so we have to work our way through that occasionally. But otherwise, pretty happy generally with how things are progressing there.
What's the habit age, chief?
I don't know, like twenty-one?
That makes you old.
I think that, I think that group right there, I, I started before all those kids were born. That's how, that's how we're looking at them. They're, they're typically about twenty-five years old or so, something like that, sir. You have to be twenty-one to join, so. The last kid we hired turned twenty-one like a week before we hired her, so.
Oh, wow.
We got that going. It's all exciting. The annual budget, you know, we have a little bit more than seven point eight million dollars assigned to the Police Department, which is very generous and sufficiently funds the Police Department. One of the tenants of the Police Department is Community Engagement. I think you might recognize some of the characters in that video right there. You know, we, we typically try and be out in the community a lot. Obviously, last year, we didn't nearly do as much as we would want to do. But we're looking forward to maybe getting back to some normalcy of that, trying to get some things on the schedule to get back, to do some things like that. That, that is probably the most adverse effect we've had is our ability to go out and engage with the community and groups and sessions and that sort of thing. We did a few things. We did our trust talks. We did a couple of use of force forums, that sort of thing. We participated in the Unity Walk, that sort of thing. But way after that, we really got to the crunch and it was tough to, trying to continue that sort of thing, so. Calls for service. So here's where we start to talk about a little bit of the data. A call for service is defined by any time the public calls us for any assistance in whatever means they might call us. There, they had a crime, there's an emergency, there's a traffic accident, there's an animal call, something like that. If they call us, we count it as a call for service. You will see that our numbers dipped down there by a little bit last year. Some of that is associated with COVID. So we had typically been responding to an EMS call. A guy fell off a ladder. We would go there and support them. When the pandemic issues started, we really scaled back and tried to decide whether we actually really needed to be there. EMS and the fire department are perfectly capable of handling those things. So reduce our exposure to the pandemic issues. We clamped down on some of the calls that we might otherwise go as a support position. We didn't do those things and we felt like that had some value to it. But otherwise, those numbers kind of came, kind of came down a little bit. In terms of dealing with the COVID, people were still calling us. We just triaged it a little differently. Instead of going there, we might have called them on the phone and worked out a police report situation that way. They were emailing us information and that sort of thing. And that helped us reduce the exposure to us and them relative to calls for service, okay?
Okay.
Part one and part two crimes. So part one crimes, I'll get to in a minute. Those are the seven big ones. Part two crimes is everything else, okay? That's established by the FBI so we can all speak the same language. When there's a theft here in California or New York or Florida or wherever, it's all the same thing, okay? So you could see the part one crimes took a pretty significant drop. And, I'm sorry, the part one crimes took a tiny drop, but the part two crimes took a pretty significant drop, okay? And that's reflective of that. But I like the trend in the last couple, three years where we see some downward trending of those, of those data points. Criminal activity, we try and break it down into every conceivable way. Part of where it happened at, what time it happened at, all of the things that we collect. We sort of put it in a map. Don't be fooled by Area Two. That's where the jail is, I think. So someone, there's a little bit more arrest activity right there. Someone gets stopped for a traffic stop and they go to jail for a DUI or something like that. We discover they have a warrant. That arrest would count as a location at the jail. So those numbers are typically higher just because that's where the jail is, okay? But you will see, we had, in Area One, we had one homicide, rape calls, robberies, assaults, all of the sort of very serious crimes. We, that's the part one crimes that we're talking about. And those are all broken down by part of the community. That's a map on the left in our patrol zones. If you have any questions about that. We broke that out to a ten-year trend. I don't like to look at one year and make a determinate decision about whether that, you know, is impactful. We kind of take a longer viewpoint and again, the last few years, we've seen a little bit of a downward trend right there, okay? Statistically, they're probably, you know, kind of goes up and down a little bit, but we try and look at the biggest possible scenario we had. This year in the city of Leavenworth, we had three homicides. That's pretty high for us. We typically don't have that. The one out on Thirteenth Street Terrace was associated with a drug case. The one up north in the community was a domestic violence incident. And then the one that we're still working on on Eisenhower was a dispute that actually started in Lansing and then ended up right there on Eisenhower. We're still working on that. I'm very happy with the progress of that investigation. We've had a lot of conversations with Mr. Thompson's office and we continue to be hopeful that at some point we'll proceed with charges on that.
Hey, chief, I do have a question on that chart.
Yes, sir.
And I understand about the homicides and obviously I agree with you. But what struck me was from 2017 to 2018, we saw a pretty significant increase in the number of rapes and then, or rape cases. And then that's kind of maintained a consistency in 2019 and 2020. Any, I mean, what, I just going from thirty-seven in 2017 to fifty-seven in 2018, obviously a very violent and concerning crime, any, any, any insights on that?
I usually answer all these questions by starting globally. You probably have seen in some of the news clips in the areas across the community about the issue of DNA test kits and some agencies not sending them in. There's a lot of conversations in the criminal justice world about sexual assault and really advocating for reporting it. One of the dilemmas that we have with the sexual assault is a concern by the victim of reporting it. And so in the last three to five years in particular, there has been a really significant push by law enforcement and sexual assault survival advocates about reporting it. And so I would not be able to tell you definitively that we've had more, but certainly I would bet some of those are as a result of that campaign. I think we, they come and ask for Sexual Assault Awareness Week, you know, that sort of thing, where they're doing the proclamations and that kind of thing. We've really worked with like St. Mary's at the campus and those, those groups to really push that message out. We, you know, we can't help if we don't know about it.
Sure.
And trying to overcome that burden. So I think that's some of it. There's been a lot of push of that in the last three or four years or so. That's sort of probably most of that, most of that.
Thank you for that answer.
Again, we break property crimes down kind of the same way. You can see throughout the community where, when, what time, any, you know, any specific other questions. We've got a lot of data about that. We just kind of map it out so folks can take a look at it. And then property crimes, again, you see the big, you know, the big drop there with the property crimes going down the last few years. And so we're excited about that. One of the issues that we've had this year that really stand out as an anomaly is stolen automobiles. We have had a lot of stolen cars. Some of it is leaving their car open, some of it leaving the keys in. The folks that have the key fob now, where you just push the button, that's a little bit of it. We just constantly push a message out to the public to help us by helping you. Don't leave your car unlocked, that kind of stuff. That's been a lot.
Is that primarily just at their house or is, do you have a high risk? Like if they're at a discount store or something like that, they leave them unlocked or?
It's, yeah, it's all over the place, but principally at the house, you know, principally at the house. That's what we're, a, a large, a large section. We recover a lot of them. It's a metropolitan-wide issue. Someone steals a car in Lawrence, they drive it up here and leave it here and we recover it, vice versa. Someone steals a car here, they take it to Kansas City and Kansas City, Missouri recovers it, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of theft being taken, but there is a pretty high recovery rate on the car, fortunately. We just can't seem to get a grasp on that.
Thank you.
Again, there's the specific numbers and those are the specific crimes on the, on the left-hand column of that that specifically identified about what a part one crime is. Murder, robbery, rape, assault, burglary, theft and auto theft. Those are part one crimes. Anything else that happens that's a crime is a part two crime, okay? And those numbers tick down just a little bit, by about thirty, which is a good trajectory.
But the trend overall has been good the last three, four years, right? As far as the decrease in the number of reported part one crimes.
Yes, sir. Clearance rates, we're at about fifty-three percent. That's a little bit higher than the national average. Part one, part one crimes, particularly property crimes are a little harder to solve. Stolen automobiles happen a lot. We, it's very difficult to solve that. Again, it's a case where a car gets stolen here in Lieutenant Lawrence. It's very difficult to figure out, you know, who does that. So that, that number is always a little bit lower. The person crimes in part one crimes are certainly easier to solve because we know it's a person crime, you know, one person punches a guy in the face. Obviously, you know who that guy, most of the time, you know who that guy is, right? So those are, that's how that sort of number looks a little bit lower. Part two crimes, again, a good trajectory. That went down and down by quite a bit, so I'm very happy about that. And the clearance rates again are a little higher for that one because those are just kind of everything all over the map about what a part two crime is. It's everything else, okay? And then the overall clearance rate is sixty-one percent, which is in line with the national average. So about, you know, six out of ten crimes that are committed, we're able to solve and identify and refer to prosecution or make an arrest of. Okay, overall crime rate there. Mental health, we deal with mental health a lot. Good news is that number is going down the last couple of years. Pretty happy about that. We're still going to one about every three days. It really takes a lot of resources to send to a mental health call because there's a lot of danger associated with, especially if somebody might be armed and dealing with somebody that has substance abuse issues and that sort of thing. If you might recall, Catalina Thompson and I came before you guys a few months back and we talked about the Mental Health Diversion Program. I wanted to follow up a little with you on that. I think they, Catalina said they've screened about five people for that program out of city court, but they've, they've approved one person and that person is receiving services. So that program's off and running. The criteria is pretty high, but it's good news that at least the one person, they're able to do that. And so just as a reminder, those folks are court required to go to the guidance center and take medication and that sort of thing. And that's, that's been helpful so far. So we're going to hopefully keep growing that program and make it a little bit more robust and help us out.
Can I ask a question in terms of the downward trend over the last three years that we have? I mean, suicide prevention line, do we have any, do we have any idea what, you know, maybe behind the, you know, less number of suicide calls over the last three years?
Hard to really give you a tangible answer about that. It's kind of along the lines of the, of the, of the awareness campaign. Even at the national level, you see a lot of people, athletes and movie stars and celebrities and politicians talking about the importance of mental health and. and politicians talking about the importance of mental health and mental health awareness, getting rid of the stigma of mental illness. And so I believe that, and I'm hopeful that some folks are seeking help on their own and it's not gotten to the point where we're at the point of a crisis where the police are responding and that sort of thing. Other than that, that might be a little COVID related too. Fewer calls to the police, that sort of thing. You know, we'll see how that goes. But I'm very happy that over the last few years, that's dropped down pretty good. So let's keep, I hope that keeps up.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep us posted on that program.
Yes, ma'am, I sure will, I sure will. We're off and running. That's only a few months old, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Detective division, so you'd notice here the blue column represents cases assigned. I call this the Ring Doorbell Effect. Okay? We saw some stuff earlier this week about Ring Doorbell cameras and security cameras. About half of the people now have some sort of either Ring Doorbell camera or security camera. So whereas before there would be a theft where we didn't have really any idea where to start or where to look, people are giving us a lot more videos. So we're assigning those cases more often, giving us a better opportunity at leads and following them up. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But that is as a result of that. And in addition to that, we have a, one or two more detective positions filled that we hadn't had for the last couple, couple of years before that. So they're working more cases, which is all good news, which is all good stuff.
How about the, I think the cleared percentage was for 2020 was about 52%. The previous year was about 50%. Is that nationally, is that a good benchmark for, you know, a detective?
Yeah, we're typically in line with the national average or maybe slightly above it. And that also sort of depends on the crime, right? Thefts are harder to solve than say, you know, a domestic violence case. We get there and everybody's there, so, you know, does that make sense, right? So did that answer your question?
How many detectives do you have in the department?
So we have a sergeant and eight detective positions and we currently have seven of them filled.
Okay.
Okay? Arrests, arrests are down a little bit. This is directly tied to COVID. We made some internal procedural decisions about exposure to the officers, whether we really needed to make some arrest or not. If we pulled somebody over for speeding and they had a hundred dollar ticket warrant that they didn't show up for court a month or two back, we just said, hey, why don't you go to court next week and turn yourself in? You know, we were given a few more warnings this year simply because it puts the officer at risk. It puts the jail staff at risk, it puts everybody at risk. So there were some decisions on some very minor issues where we might have otherwise made an arrest. We, you know, did, we encourage the officers not to do that. And there were various times throughout the course of the year, especially early in the pandemic, where I really tightened the screws on what we were doing. I just, we needed to make sure we had accurate information about the risk to exposure. It took us a little time to get ramped up on PPEs, masks and gloves and the equipment to make sure the officers were equipped appropriately. So there were times throughout the early parts of the pandemic that we really scaled down our efforts responding to things that we absolutely needed to and then triage the other ones. And so there's, that's probably the best indication of how the pandemic affected us last year. Arrest by area, you know, again, you see the area two there, that's where the jail is. That number's always higher, right? That number's always higher. Domestic cases, bad news, we teak back up a little bit on that, back up to over 600. Just about two every day, two every 24-hour period we're going to a domestic violence case. And trying our best to resolve that. We just can't crack the code.
Chief, I've got a question. I know each one of these cases is different, but is, I mean, in your experience and the experience of your officers, is there typically or every once in a while a mental health component to this in terms of the domestic case?
You could probably always count on some substance abuse issue, okay? Exacerbated by mental illness, eh, sometimes, but much more, much more prevalent is substance abuse. Alcohol, drugs, that sort of thing. Is much more of a, of a problem in terms of domestic violence issues. Mental health occasionally, but if that's the issue, we probably focus on that more than anything. We're trying to sort through what the deal is, why are we there? And it's both of them, then it gets complicated, but substance abuse is much more prevalent in terms of domestic violence. Okay? And then we capture all kinds of data, when, where, which area of the community, age, race, who does it, when they do it, all that stuff. And this kind of just is indicative of that. Narcotics enforcement, continue to do that. One of the areas we found some success is, is partnering with the federal government and the US Attorney's Office. Anybody that we can identify as a person that distributes or sells a hard drug like heroin and there is a fatal overdose for that, we are forwarding that to the US Attorney's Office and asking for prosecution. They've done that three times this year. And essentially what happens when that occurs is there is a sentence enhancement when it comes time for sentencing. So if the judge, you know, is convinced that that's what happened and someone died for it, they get an additional amount of time on their sentence because that is enhanced. And so that's a trend that's happening across the country. Really trying to attack the heroin, fentanyl stuff, which is the most dangerous deadly and we deal with in terms of drug cases. That's really the most disruptive part that we have. And so we've really done that and seen some success in that regard.
Chief, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
In terms of from 2019 to 2020, number of cases went from 164 to 102. Number of suspects charged, 200 to 110. I mean, is that good, bad or indifferent? I mean, as far as?
There are times when I look at the data and I sort of think to myself, how did the pandemic affect us? So if you look at the last three, two years before that, it's pretty steady, right? The general steady and then last year. So I, I would need to see next year's data before I could say that 2020 was an anomaly or there's less of it. I'm guessing anomaly since the COVID stuff. Because we also, on the detective side too, we put some, some elements of, you know, stay at the station unless you have to during periods of time early in the pandemic. We really were concerned about how that would affect us. So I was really concerned about a department-wide outbreak of the pandemic and having no cops. So we worked hard to avoid that. Traffic accidents, traffic accidents are down. I'm almost certain that's COVID related because there was less driving. Schools were closed for parts of the time, businesses were closed, there were just less people out there. Less people means less cars. And so there were less traffic accidents out there, which is the good news. Citations were down a little bit, periods of time where I told the traffic unit to scale back, you know, all that stuff. Traffic citations, we do all of our stuff by race and gender and age and location and time. You know, and we provide that information out to the general public.
I have a question on traffic.
Okay.
When you reestablished the traffic unit, was it in 2019 or 2018?
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah, so, yeah, so it'd be.
And you didn't have a comparison there with last year. But I mean, if you had a comparison, would it, I mean, in terms of the number of citations for traffic or?
I'm going to show you a slide in a minute that they might be better, better indicator of how positive it's been. Traffic citations by all that stuff. Traffic locations, Walmart continues to be the location. The one on the left is the parking lot, okay? That's people backing into each other at the parking lot, okay? That's minor stuff where they're, you know, taking out taillights and stuff. The one down the way there, 10th Avenue and Eisenhower, that whole location really seems to really get us right there to 10th and Eisenhower, just really a lot of time and effort goes into traffic accidents there. Some of those honestly end up being Lansing because they're on that side of the road too. So there's a little bit of information that wouldn't be here, you know, but it's on Lansing's side. So that just really requires a lot of our attention. Now, so here's the one that I would like to refer, look at the far right-hand side. Our driving under the DUI arrest went way up. And that is directly correlated with the traffic unit being out there, targeting impaired drivers, which is a problem for us. And so that's probably an indication of how successful the traffic unit's being. And they're just very helpful to have it. We get the occasional complaint to you, which makes its way ultimately to me and I can send the traffic unit out there to give it some attention. And that's happened quite a bit and that's just part of the business. Occupancy protection, you know, I'm really happy with the city of Leavenworth and Leavenworth County in general. Typically when they do the KDOT studies, we're at about 90% of wearing their seat belts or car, car seats. So I'm really happy about that. Occasionally we still write a ticket for somebody that doesn't have a seatbelt on, but I'm generally pretty happy about that. That message continues to get through very well. Happy about that.
So you think the downward trend is really awareness and people, citizens in the, in the county and also the city?
Yeah, I really do. KDOT comes out once or twice a year and does a study. Though you see the people standing at this corner taking notes on a clipboard once in a while. That's KDOT people. They're counting who's wearing their seatbelt and we're typically at about 90%. So pretty happy about that.
Okay.
PSI's, these are officer-related behavior complaints. So if an officer misbehaves regarding something, you will see that we had 12 last year. Why I talk about this is seven of those issues were as a result from internal to the police department. Supervisors monitoring the behavior of the officers and deciding that corrective action was necessary on something that they did. We had five from outside of the department where a person called and said, I have a complaint about the police. They were rude, they cursed at me during a traffic stop or something like that. And then we investigate all of those and you can see the results of those on the, on the left-hand side. We do quite a bit of time and attention in monitoring the officer behavior. Yes, sir?
Sustained on the left side, 2020, one was sustained. Three were exonerated. Not sustained, one unfounded was seven. What's the difference between exonerated, not sustained?
Okay. Exonerated is we watch the videotape and it is absolutely crystal clear what happened. Officer acted appropriately, okay? The other one would be, we're 95% sure the officer acted appropriately, but we're just not able to be that definitive that the officer is good to go on that. Or someone makes an initial complaint and then won't follow through. They won't come back down and talk to us or they won't follow through, something like that. Sustained means the officer absolutely misbehaved and got some sort of corrective action, some disciplinary action. And then the other one was unfounded. If it's unfounded, that means somebody just completely made the whole thing up, which happens once in a while, one, one time. Completely made the whole thing up. Good with that, questions for that? And then in terms of bias-based policing, we keep that on the left. This 2020, we didn't have any complaints. On the right-hand side, you will see use of force reports filed by the officer. Every time an officer is involved in a use of force incident, when they make an arrest, they're required to fill out a completely separate police report so that we can review that and sign off on whether they acted appropriately.
Can I, can I go back?
Yes, sir.
I mean, the downward trend is obvious over the last three years. What, what do you attribute, attribute that to?
So we made a few less arrests this year. And so that number is down a tiny bit. I would imagine if we made a few more arrests, it would go up. I try not to get focused entirely on the number, but the percentage.
Right.
So we made 1,427 arrests last year. We had 112 incidents of use of force, which represents about 8%. And that's pretty standard statistically. It kind of goes up and down a tiny bit, but, so that means eight out of 100 times when we made an arrest, there was some element of use of force associated with it. And that's a pretty good number, you know, if you look globally. That's a lot of arrests and a, you know, a little bit of use of force. So I'm generally, generally satisfied with that. Here's the kinds of use of force we use. Chemical agents tasered four times last year, got a little tougher to get the guy under arrest. So we had to taser somebody or use pepper spray. Most of the time you see in the middle, it's a little bit of wrestling, okay, with the, with the guy. An arm bar or something like that. An impact weapon, one time we had a pretty good fight, so I think they struck the guy with a baton. And then anytime on the right-hand side column reflects when an officer displays their weapon for some reason, we didn't, we didn't discharge the weapon, but if they're displaying it, they have it out and they're pointing it at somebody, they're required to tell me about it so I can make sure I understand why we're doing that. And then we always watch the video. The body camera videos help us support what the officers are doing. So we pay a lot of attention to use of force. And then we keep it by race, gender, age, time, location, all of that stuff. We categorize that and make that available to the public to take a look at. Almost all the use of force we deal with is men. Men like to fight with the police or, that's about testosterone more than anything. You're not taking me to jail, that kind of thing. Okay? I added this one this year. Cops taking on the chin occasionally. 19 times we got punched in the face. Five times we got spit on, one time we got headbutted. And then for some reason the guy flicked a cigarette at us during an arrest, so that counts. So I felt like, you know, I wanted the, the public to know that occasionally it gets a little rough out there. No serious injuries thankfully, bumps and bruises, that sort of thing, but they're fine. The bomb unit, we still have a bomb unit. They go out about once a month on something. Keep in mind now we're regional, right? We handle Leavenworth, but we also handle, so I think this year they've been on, they discovered some pipe bombs in a shed, some old ordinances, a few hand grenades, stuff like that. So about once a month, there's a need for the bomb unit to go out and find something that is either explosive or hazardous. And so they go out there and solve that for us.
But these numbers include outside the city of Leavenworth too?
Yeah, anytime they respond, right? Typically, it's typically the county is what we cover. The guys rotate through like Florence, the KU basketball team is having a game. They'll have the guys on standby, the unit, the teams rotate. So we go up there a couple of times, a couple of times during the season and be on standby in case there's an issue at the basketball game or the campus. And then we keep information for the fire department. They went 2,627 times last year. Generally, those are mostly EMS calls and fire calls if there's a fire. They'll have to talk to Chief Birch about what actually they did, but we keep the numbers. Animal control. So we categorize all kinds of information about how many animals we, animals that we handle. Let's get to this one. We handled about 875 numbers like that. Our euthanasia rate is one and a half percent. Almost all of them are court ordered because the dog is dangerous, because the dog bit somebody or the dog is critically injured or ill. Very rarely if ever anymore, we don't euthanize an animal for space. We have plenty of space down there and we just don't have the need to do that. I do want to talk just a little bit about our partnership with laws. I brought some information about them because I think it's important to point out to you and the public about how helpful they are. So last year, just a few numbers. Of the 538 dogs that the animal control facility took in, laws took 120 of them and facilitated their ultimate adoption. In the previous year in 2019, that was closer to 50. So they have been very, very helpful in terms of facilitating that. Of the 268 cats that we brought down there, laws took 118 of them and facilitated their adoption. The big number here I want to talk about, laws spent $17,500 on medical issues for animals that were injured or ill. The most recent example, we had a puppy that showed up with stray with a broken leg. They took the dog, they pay, they will pay for the medical expenses. We pay for the initial sort of part of it, but, you know, we talked about the animal control van that we were considering. So we've made that decision, we're going to donate that to them. By, by far and away, they help us equally. And so we were very happy to, to get that to them. But they do a great job. The Hope Clinic does a great job for us on the reduced vaccinations and span neutering program. They're just invaluable to us and that's why these numbers are as reflective, as positive as they are because without them, we probably wouldn't be able to meet that. So I wanted to make sure they got the proper credit for that.
Tell us about the goats.
The what now?
The goats.
The goats.
That was the story of the year.
That was the story of the year. So the goats escaped. The guy bought the goats, he was unloading them from the truck and they escaped from him. And goats are really hard to catch, as it turns out. They tried everything from traps to food to all kinds of stuff. They finally, after a few weeks, rounded one of them up. But in a little bit of opposition by the chief, a posse was formed and about 25 people went and caught the other one under the bridge by the courthouse on 4th Street. That's where they were hanging out, over by the courthouse. You'd see pictures of them on the courthouse steps. They were just quite charming characters. They didn't cause any damage or anything like that. I was worried about one of them getting hit by a car, but we managed to catch one and the posse managed to catch the other one a couple of days later.
Yeah, I remember, I remember seeing them when I was up at the courthouse.
So the occasional non-domestic animals, so. That guy, I think the guy gave the goats back to whoever he bought them for. That didn't work out well.
But yeah, I do have a comment real quick since we're on the, the animals is that in the adoption category, yeah, I, my husband and I, we adopted one from animal control probably a week and a half ago. And I want to shout out to Pam Hill and Teresa Murphy and yeah, to Chief Kitchens, what a great job you do. And the Hope Shelter Foundation helped out. But yeah, his name's Walter and he's at home with Lucky and Adele and they're having a great time.
Okay. Great job, congratulations, Walter.
Yeah.
Bike cases, I'm a little bit worried about that. Bike cases are trending up the last few years. Keeping in mind now a bike case by and large Keeping in mind now, a bike case by and large is typically a family or acquaintance circumstance where maybe a little kid is tugging at the dog's tail while they're eating and getting nipped or something like that. Those are by and large the ones that we deal with. There are a few cases that are, you know, the guy, the dog got out of the neighbor's fence and really caused some trouble, but most of those cases are reflective of family or acquaintance circumstances. And fortunately, most of them are not serious. I mean, some of them are a little bit serious, but some, you know, most of them are not. And then those are the numbers of the enforcements. We do some dangerous dog stuff, running at large, other violations like they don't have their vaccinations up to date or their registration, that sort of thing. That's it for me on the data. I'll answer whatever questions you might have. If you didn't see something you want, I can get that produced for you relatively quickly and get that to you as a follow-up question or other general law enforcement related stuff. We'd be glad to answer whatever questions you might have.
Okay, yeah, let's start with Commissioner Griswold.
I have a question on shootings and, you know, I always take with a grain of salt what I see on social media, particularly Facebook, but is that one statistic that you track? Just even if somebody, you know, fortunately is not hit with a bullet or anything, but do you track the number of shootings, you know, bullets being discharged?
So we get, we get a lot of calls, people reporting shots fired.
Okay.
We respond to all of them. If we're able to determine through evidence at the scene, there's a bullet hole in the car, there's shell casings, something like that. The Ring videos have been helpful occasionally, right? We will document that and if there's a crime, well, discharging a firearm is a crime. But if we're able to associate it with a particular person, we'll investigate that. So I, you know, in the last few years, that number has remained fairly steady. I think 57 in 2018, 65 in 2019, and 66 in 2000. So that's pretty steady in terms of the cases that we were able to specifically say, yes, that a shooting occurred. And that, so, and that's a common issue in law enforcement in most cities. You know, gunshots and that sort of thing, gun violence, that sort of thing is a pretty common problem that we deal with.
And various reasons for that, I mean, some of it could be drug activity or?
Drug activity. Just, yeah, runs the gamut of issues. We had the incident the other day at the gas station, I think probably everybody saw that. We've been able to identify both of those people, we're actively searching for them. And I would anticipate at some point soon, charges here from that case. But we're far along the road on that case and pretty positive about what we're in.
Very quickly, technology, drones, is the drone still being used in some way, shape or form to help you with your law enforcement?
The drone is, the drone team is being used pretty actively. We've searched for people and evidence and all kinds of different stuff. We upgraded our drone program. I spent some of our drug money that we have, well, I spent almost all the last of the drug money that we have from, to buy a fairly sophisticated drone with an upgraded camera, night vision, infrared stuff. Because that was sort of the next evolution of our program. And so that got here, the team is working on practicing with that because it's a little bit bigger. It's probably much bigger in terms of the other ones that you saw, but much more capable, 55 or 60 minute battery power, so it could stay up for a while. So much different, much better, and we're going to have that operational here in a couple of weeks, I think.
Good. One other question on technology. A couple of years ago, you briefed us on probably some sophisticated and modern camera technology and computers and things where you would map like, you know, like the auditoriums of the school or something like that. And where does that stand? Are you making progress as far as, as far as that goes?
We have been making progress. COVID, we did not go in the schools at all and it's been a little while, right? But we had mapped out, so there are six schools. We had mapped out one of them. We had started working on the other one. It takes, the dilemma is logistics. School buildings are not empty surprisingly as much as you would think even during the summer.
Right.
And it needs to be empty. And so that's why it takes a little while. We need to be able to have a few days in the building with the technology to do that. We're going to work, we're going to get started on that when things open back up, hopefully this fall. Maybe this summer if they'll let us in there, but yeah, we're still working on that.
I think that's really important, but I understand what happened in 2020, but thank you for that update.
No problem. I have one final thing about training. So we've upgraded our training program and we've gotten some equipment. At some point over the summer when it warms up, I'm going to send out an invitation for you guys to come out and watch some of our training. Because we're really focused on decision-making, de-escalation, using the right tools when we're confronted with a scenario. We've got a lot of new stuff that we're going to be using to train, which prevent, which presents opportunities for visitors to come and watch and see. And so be on the lookout for that when it warms up. Out probably at the fire station, we'll have that stuff set up and have you, you know, come on out and take a look at what we're doing so you get a sense of what the police are training when they're out making decisions about use of force and arrests and that kind of stuff. Be enjoyable, I think.
Okay, okay.
Two questions, what percent or what number of your officers have been vaccinated?
So, the, let's see, a week ago Friday, they had their second shot. I think the percentage number is 70%.
Okay.
70% of the staff at the police department have been vaccinated, both shots.
Okay, thank you. And this, you know, isn't your call, but you'd probably have some input in it, on it. Have you heard any, any talk trending a little bit in the US of veterans courts? For, you know, non-colonial type crimes, but, you know, high misdemeanors? That sometimes they have veterans courts and.
I've heard of that, right. I've heard of that.
Like a class of volunteer with that veteran to kind of?
Right, I've heard of that. I don't know that there's talk about doing that here. My experience with that is the mental health court. We talked a lot about that. We were not able to make that happen at the district court level. We do have it at the city court level, but veterans courts, I've seen some communities do that. I would say that Leavenworth is probably a viable candidate for, given that we have the VA and the pretty high volume of VA of veterans here. But I've heard of that, I haven't heard any talk in the community about doing that. Certainly I can talk to Mr. Thompson.
I just know a guy in Alabama, he's kind of pushing it all around. He started a couple of them and, you know, not for bank robberies or things like that, but higher misdemeanors. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I don't remember the timeframe exactly, but I think it was about a year ago. There was an online reporting process that was implemented where you can file a complaint online. Is that being utilized still?
So we had, we have been talking and working towards online reporting where a person could file a criminal complaint.
Correct.
Right, and so it's called the citizen services module, right? So in the last 60 days or so, we have been identifying vendors to buy the kiosk, to put the kiosk at the station that a person can come into the station and not have to see an officer. They can do that. In line with that, when we get that acquired and installed, we're very likely to turn on the online citizen services module. My goal is this year so that someone can file a criminal complaint at home where they have access to the internet. Now, it's not going to be every crime, it'll be some fairly minor ones. So we're working out the logistics of things like evidence, right? The Ring cameras, how are they going to get us a copy of the video associated with the report? So there's some technical logistical issues that are quite complex that need to be worked out. But I, my goal is to have that turned on this year. And we're a few months, but I think we're going to get that turned on this year.
Okay.
We have it, it's just a matter of turning it on and making sure we're good.
All right, appreciate it, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I didn't have anything. A great report as usual. Thank you, Chief Kitchens.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll wrap it up, so I'll just go around the bend. Commissioner Wilson, did you have anything?
Actually, I don't.
You don't? Okay.
Nothing.
Nothing?
No, I just, the only thing I have is I noticed the report came out, the Monday report from the county health department and they were, the stats were very encouraging yesterday in terms of COVID-19, new community cases was only 18. And the positive test percentage was 5.33%. And the daily case counts for 14-day moving average were 8.57, which dramatic drops when we, in mid-November, when we were considering, you know, the mask ordinance and things like that. So all I can say is that just encourage people are doing, I think, by and large, people are doing the right things in terms of their public health measures. And of course, each, as each day goes along, there's more and more vaccinations happening within the community and that'll continue, so we just need to keep up the good work there. And that's all I have.
Okay, so everyone out there in TV land and everyone here in present, have a great rest of the week. Meeting adjourned.